It's impossible.
Thank you. We don't have a lot of handouts, but here's two maybe we could share, which it shows you.
Oh, where's that one?
Which shows you what staff said, what staff proposes their six priorities and then the things that came out of your discussion this morning. And the first thing we have to talk about is alignment. Are you okay with the six staff proposed or there are changes you want to make?
You're asking us of the six things under staff recommendations if you're okay with them. As far as category, as far as wording, both?
Both.
And if they align to what you guys discussed this morning or if we missed it.
Well, let me, if you don't mind, safe and healthy city is great. I don't think there should be much discussion on that. I'm comfortable with that.
That aligns with safe?
Yeah, I see, exactly.
So you, those two align up then, is that?
Oh, I see what you're asking us. What lines up? Yeah, that obviously lines up.
I think that the main goal is when we're finished at this discussion, you are comfortable with whatever priorities we decide on at this table.
Okay, take the easy ones first. Safe was great.
That was, that's easy, okay.
What about another I think easier one might be jobs and then thriving and sustainable business community? Is that what we're talking about, jobs?
Sure.
Yes, very good.
Do you want to call it thriving and sustainable business community? Are you happy with that term?
No, not really. It's a little complex. I would like to make it a little bit more easy.
And more positive and proactive, okay?
I like the proactive.
Okay, so let's hook those with your pen. Hook the safe and wherever we're headed.
Well, safe goes up to safe.
Safe goes to safe.
And now we're into thriving.
Jobs goes to thriving?
I just can't even draw a line here.
Okay.
But in resolving that compatibility, do we come up with new wording here? How do we prevent ourselves from not getting bogged down? Do we just categorize them first and then go back?
That's fine.
Okay, keep going.
Well, we've got customer service under both.
Right, good.
So that ought to be easier, right?
Yep.
Community attachment.
And that one I thought was kind of like quality of life.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Efficient government's comprehensive fiscal stewardship.
Yeah, exactly. Sorry about my, uh, errands.
It's alright.
So efficient is what now? Comprehensive fiscal stewardship?
And job securities, world-class workforce?
So there were two, there were two that sounds like that were very employee-focused, yeah.
Job security and work environment. Yeah, those both come under the same category, so we could tie the last two on the bottom to world-class workforce.
Is that alright?
Or does, or does work environment work with community attachment or something else? Where'd you put that?
But the community attachment goes towards our constituents, whereas work environment is solely for our employees.
Okay.
That looked like when you defined work environment, you said reward and impact.
And I just came up with the work environment thing to classify, to categorize it.
Well, if you're asking us to match or not the categories from the bottom to the top, I think we just did that.
So these two would become world-class workforce?
Yeah, they come under that category.
Right, okay. So we matched them up. Now the issue's the nomenclature. What do we want to call each one?
Thriving and sustainable business community.
Maybe pick out the ones you like first.
Yeah, there's.
Safe, good point. Safe and healthy city.
Okay, I like that.
Put a star.
You should be president. You're smart.
That one's easy, right? So we're okay with that.
Can we add the word clean or doesn't that belong?
Does that not come under healthy maybe?
Yeah, but can we just have it so it's there for everybody?
Say healthy and clean city maybe?
The thing about adding clean.
Okay, alright, so you've been there.
Is that, um, community attachment, the way we defined it, it had, it had aesthetics within it.
Oh, okay, so let's leave that then.
And it said physically attractive was the way we termed it, which we felt, you know.
Okay.
Plus, I think part of this should be, in communicating it, should be easy and straightforward and sort of brief. Yeah. Okay, so safe and healthy city, I mean, for now, we can always change it.
Can you put out here the word clean?
In other words, just in case you get four votes, is that what you're saying?
Just if this, if community attachment becomes the thing that we spent 45 minutes, and I'll be gone by then.
There's a pod big question. The second one was, uh...
I think customer service was on both.
How about, this is very easy. A comprehensive fiscal stewardship and efficient government?
Yeah, I just don't love comprehensive fiscal stewardship. It's complicated sounding.
Fiscally sound government, they said they liked it. Said he liked fiscally sound government, that's what it was.
He likes the way he was.
Fiscally sound government versus comprehensive fiscal stewardship, you mean?
Councilman Barlow's in fiscally responsible.
How about just fiscally responsible?
Right, government.
Government.
City?
Fiscally.
Put a parentheses or a dash on that?
Was that responsible city, is that the word reason?
Fiscally, what'd you say, responsible government? Can you put in the little parentheses the word?
You're the mayor, I put anything you want. What did you want?
Efficient.
Okay.
Throw that in.
I think customer service and customer service are pretty much straight across.
Except one is excellent.
Excellence at the end.
Let's add excellence.
We have customer service.
Excellence in customer service. Excellence in customer service.
Excellent.
Versus customer service excellence?
Right, no, excellence in customer service.
What do you think about customer friendly?
Well, we don't want to just be friendly. We want to provide an excellent service. It's not just being friendly, it must be good too, it must be excellent.
Well, that's a part of the friendliness.
What do we have up above? You had customer service.
Customer service, excellent, then we said excellent customer service and Councilman Barlow was talking about customer service friendly.
No, customer friendly.
My personal opinion, it doesn't say enough.
Yeah, I would tend to, you want to be, you want to strive for excellence.
Well, let's add it. I mean, we can put it off to the side and talk about it.
Right, and put that on the side.
So what are we, what is the, what is excellence in?
Yeah, I've heard that excellence says to the person, if you're excellent or you're friendly. I mean, I think they...
I agree, that's what I'm saying. But let's talk about it. Excellence in customer service.
Why not just excellent customer service? That's what I'm, excellent.
Excellent.
I wrote that down and then I changed it when I said.
Excellent customer service, and we'll put friendly.
So it's excellent?
It's just to be clear and precise and not too wordy.
Right, okay.
Friendly in parentheses, is that it?
Well, we're just putting it off to the side for future discussion.
With my efficient and clean.
It's just, it's something to consider.
Alright.
Okay, so now the jobs, thriving, sustainable business community and jobs, ease of business process.
Well, what about community attachment? What did that hook up with?
Well, that's the hard one, that was the hard one.
Oh, you want to say that for?
Why don't you go to this, this one, you hooked right there, with this one here.
Jobs and what? Thriving and sustainable business community?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's put thriving and sustainable business community with a question mark for...
What's the part about it that you don't like though? What gives you a bad feel? Is it one of the words or is it the?
It's a little wordy.
Too wordy, okay.
Thriving.
Sustainable. I guarantee you, you ask 100 people what sustainable is and you're going to get 100 different answers. I don't like sustainable.
So we want, about thriving and proactive? Like collaborative?
Or proactive. Sometimes I think jobs need to be in there, because if a citizen reads it, they're like, jobs.
It's the mantra of today, so I agree with you in that.
How about proactive business community?
I like that.
That's not bad.
And that's less words.
Although proactive, um, I think, well, this is going to sound really bad, but educated people understand what proactive is. A lot of people don't know what proactive, what does that mean, proactive?
What about something like job-creating business community, since we're all about jobs?
Loss of sustaining, sorry to use the word.
Well, the intent of sustainable there was...
Because they need to maintain.
Five years ago, we had a great economy, one of the best in the world, but it didn't sustain.
Beyond just the status quo, because to sustain something needs to keep it steady.
Status quo, right.
That's what sustain is, static, but we're not static, we're...
I don't think sustainable incorporates, I think sustainable is looking towards the future.
To sustain something means to hold something steady.
But when you talk in, in most groups about what sustainable is, they're looking towards the future, future. Being able to sustain something into the future, am I right or am I wrong?
Which would be employment and a thriving economy.
What if instead of proactive, you want to get the active in there, that it's active with the business community? So how about an active participation?
That's adding another word.
An active business community.
How about positive, positive business community?
I still like proactive.
I mean, it's aggressive and it's forward thinking.
I think people associate a good feeling with that. I agree with you. When you think about proactive, because I do it a lot in my other, in my other life as a lawyer, I'm very proactive in what I do. So I agree it has a positive tone and people feel good about being proactive. It's a positive thing. I agree with that.
I mean, what do we want? I keep thinking we want thriving businesses and jobs.
Right. So how do you say that?
Thriving businesses and jobs, that's what I would say the priority is.
I don't like thriving.
Thriving.
Not just barely surviving, not like hanging on by a thread.
Doesn't the city want to get out there? The city want to go out there and push jobs, lead and lead and push for jobs and push for business?
And that's where...
Let's write it down, we can come back to it later. Proactive business community, three words. Come back and kill it.
Is pro, is it pro-active or just proactive?
One word, one word.
You noticed I took, and you wrote fulfillment, I took one L off your whole.
I know. I wasn't sure. Why would I see him spelling?
Well, now today you have the good.
Underline proactive.
Okay, so how many, how many are we left with?
You have four right now.
Community, yes, am I right?
So another one is...
Now what do we have?
World-class workforce we need to figure out and...
Community attachment, we still have, yeah.
Right, and then employment.
And the world-class workforce.
Your work environment really says the world-class workforce. Equity, work environment is, is all about equity, rewards, empowerment and respect. That's exactly what the world-class workforce portrayed. That was all encompassed in there. I like that title. I know what you were saying about the word, but...
I might be in the minority. I don't see world-class and workforce going together. I see world-class and city going together, but world-class and workforce. I mean, I like that we could have a world-class workforce.
It started as world-class city and it moved to world-class workforce because the focus was on the workforce itself, the employees, and the city was too big.
Your husband talked about world-class city for 12 years. I like world-class city. Now, if we're going off course here, tell me.
World-class workforce in this world-class city.
Too wordy.
I know.
But we already know we have a world-class city.
Okay, and what we're trying to do is come up with priorities, right?
How can we have world-class workforce if we don't have a world-class educational system?
They all came from somewhere else.
World-class workforce, parentheses, none from here.
What can we say?
Well, what are we trying to do? Are we trying to talk about our employees now or are we trying to talk about our city?
It was about the employees.
Yeah, about the employees, then we need to bag us.
Because the employees will help create the world-class city.
This is going to be the foundation of the world-class city.
Those helping to get there.
What about proud and, proud in something workforce? I like the word pride.
That was professional. That was what community attachment was, professional.
But that, but community is, is our constituents. We're just talking about our employees now. We need more talent.
We got two more to go.
How about professional?
Professional what?
Workforce.
First class, that's a good one.
Well, you've been with the city 30 years.
First class, I like that.
How long?
Twice, thinking of himself.
30 years with the city.
First class.
First class professional.
It doesn't get any better than first class. And first class is the best.
Because everybody wants to be in first class. When you fly someone, I want to be in first class. First-class workforce.
So professional workforce or workforce?
First-class workforce.
First-class workforce is professional.
This is a...
Yeah, first class is the top for everything. You'd be professional, you'd have pride, you'd be efficient.
Alright, so what's that one? This is first-class workforce.
First-class workforce. Now we've got the tough one, quality of life, community attachment.
Can't we have the word professional in there? Put my parentheses after my workforce.
Alright, professional.
Because that's what they are. Each person is a professional in his own area.
How do you spell professional?
P-R-O-F.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Nowadays with computers and spell checks and secretaries, I don't know. I come up with it, the word may spell it.
Okay, the only thing I, since I'm leaving, I want to, I understand what's inferred here with this community attachment. And it started off, why won't somebody come to live in this community? Because they want to get engaged and be part of it and have an attachment to it. That's where it came from.
Community pride.
That's what it started with. And I really like that. And you know what? People said they associate it with like the gay and lesbian community.
That's what it started with, yeah.
Yeah, but it's community pride.
I know.
Bring it back.
I love that.
I find community pride, well, let's put it down. Do you want to do a parenthesis in the next...
Let's explain it.
Okay. They're so happy to know it's back. That was your group. So we are good to go with proactive business community, that's what we're going to say. When we report out, we're going to say that's, that's how it's going to be proactive business community.
Yeah, that's what we put down with no, uh...
I came up with another one just for, just to throw it out. The proactive, just put cutting-edge business environment?
Oh, that's good, cutting-edge. Oh, but you're not going to like the definition piece.
Well, no, I don't think you necessarily have to be cutting-edge, because you have a good G for it.
Something earlier that I can't think of the wordies. When you were discussing things earlier and I can't remember the wordies.
I was just trying to get the business environment.
Probably would have been right in there too.
Proactive business community.
Wrote down everything but that word, I think, that you guys were talking about.
Proactive, maybe just proactive business environment.
Is it thriving business?
Well, now we're going back to...
Nobody used it, the word thriving, no one liked it. I thought it was sustainable, nobody liked it.
I think both of them.
Both of them, okay.
Thriving?
Although...
Thriving shows activity.
There's other possible words for three or four of these categories that Maggie didn't get off the board.
I think, uh...
The mayor insisted on a couple for, for future discussion.
So, so number six is community pride?
Yes, of course.
Well, that's what we were...
No, no, no. No, for, um, the attachment, the community attachment.
We've got, how could, you should have six of them.
Quality of life.
Community pride. And for you guys, it was, uh, job security for employees, I think, and quality. Was it both of these together?
You know, um, there's nothing there to speak about diversity.
Well, your first-class workforce.
And I think community pride incorporates.
That was discussed in that little video on, uh, community attachment.
Yeah.
That communities that are welcoming to a diverse range of people are ones that people tend to get attached to.
Well, you could do...
That's what the video said.
Yeah.
You could do, um, first-class diversified workforce, but then you get...
No, this wasn't a workforce, this was community.
No, I know, community attachment, which is now community pride when you're open to all kinds of people.
Diversified, yeah.
And we could, we could make sure that that's a component of this, if there are specific things.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a great point, is what are we doing? What is this task? Is this task to come up with just the names for values? Because after that, we will then more define.
That's, that's our next step in this discussion today, is to talk about...
Then we define what these terms mean.
How do we measure success in these areas?
I don't necessarily disagree with you. I'm not saying we shouldn't have diversity in the, in the title of one of these, but it is going to be part of the definitional, um, aspect, component of this, correct?
Something else I don't see is culture.
Culture is up in safe and healthy city.
Well, culture was part of community pride. Culture was part of community pride.
Diversity and culture?
And education and...
It was a big one. It was that whole thing that makes you...
Physically attracted, it's a catch-all.
Feel great about your city.
Yeah, it's, it was the touchy-feeling one, because your culture, your recreational activities.
If you have a healthy city, you've got, you've got culture in a healthy city too. I could argue that it would be up there still. I don't think you're healthy if you don't have culture. One keeps up.
I think that one was more geared toward the infrastructure and the safeness.
Okay, now what do we do?
Well, if you guys are happy with this...
But this is, this is what, potential names or?
This is us reporting out, right, reporting out, because these two groups are going to be doing the same thing, and so then we've got to somehow...
Where, where does, where does entertainment and the arts fall?
All there.
It's a catch-all for...
Well, basically what we did is we used Gallup in that, um, video that we saw, and they said 10 things that make people attach to their community, make people want to live there, recommend businesses. And, um, the top three were being open to all cultures, aesthetic, so having to be a beautiful place to live, and then having social offerings. So within this, the seven things that we had were volunteerism, nice parks and rec, um, great downtown, arts and culture.
The P in pride needs to be capitalized, by the way. No, every other first letter is capitalized.
Still looks kind of lowercase.
Looks like pied.
It's kind of like this is the one where, where you want to live, work and play.
But I want to go back to what we're doing here. We are determining our priority, council priorities, correct?
We were aligning what you said earlier with staff.
Well, we've aligned, now we're trying to name them.
Right.
Once we name them, we can further describe what they are, is what I'm talking, correct?
What success, what success means.
Okay, what success means. Under each category, to have community pride, to be successful at having community pride, we would need to do... And that's what would incorporate some of the things you're talking about under each of the categories. What does it mean to be a safe and healthy city? It's not, our, our council priorities are not just going to be a label, they're going to have descriptive terms after them, correct?
Right.
So that's where we incorporate a lot of things you're talking about, if we don't put them in the actual name of the value.
I'm actually not sure if there's going to be descriptors. I mean, of course it'll be described in the report card and we do that again. What'll come under this are the things we want to achieve next year, so like...
Well, that, yeah, how do you determine whether you're successful, performance standards or whatever?
Right.
Well, that's another way of saying what makes our community have community pride.
Yeah, because that would be somewhat of a descriptor. I mean, your outcome or your success would somewhat define what it means.
I think you need to have descriptors, because these are buzzwords.
Yep. Yeah, actually, we need to spend more time on the next step than, in a way, that we just aligned the priorities of staff and the priorities of council. Now the next step is really...
Well, not only did we align them, we also renamed them.
Right, right.
Now, so now what we, what do we do?
Now we should, we could go through them one by one and talk about what you want to see happen in the next three to five years?
Yep.
They mentioned how do we know we are successful, so what is that?
How do we know we're successful? We could talk about measurements if you want, like with safe city, you could talk about crime rates, what else have we measured in the past? We've looked at fire statistics, like cardiac arrests, where they've been able to have an impact on that and survivability. We've looked at room of origin.
Room of origin?
Yeah, in the fire containing.
Once they get there.
I got it, I got it.
Uh, there's a, there's actually a traffic measurement that we had where, due to the changes that public works has made, how many fatalities, how fatalities come down.
You know, I meant to bring this up. There's been a lot of attention in the last couple of weeks on, uh, police use of force and police shootings. And one of the articles talked about in other cities, certain public officials calling on an outside investigation. Uh, and I'm not saying that I'm doing that or in favor of that, but I'm wondering if that is something that should at least be discussed. Maybe not today, because it would cause us to really go off on a tangent, but if you're talking about a safe and healthy city, and today there's a lot of talk about too many police shootings. But I don't know that we should go there, because that's a whole can of worms that I don't know if we have enough time today to go into.
We critique use of forces though, just so you know. We critique everyone that comes through. So anytime there's a use of force by a police officer, corrections officer, in the city, we're ready.
Okay, that's interesting.
We do do a critique already on it, and it goes through the chain of commands up to the lieutenant. And actually, we keep record of them in...
And you're talking about primarily at the, at the jail or even your marshals out in the field? Okay, but we also supervise and fund Metro. And you don't do that with Metro. Metro has its own...
Correct, they do.
You know, if we had more time, I really think that it's a good topic that the city should take up, but I don't want to poison the well right now. I think it's, it's huge. So like, so forget I said it.
We can add it to the list. I think, I think actually moving to metrics right now is going too far, that we should instead be talking about what you want to see happen.
Right.
What kind of initiatives, what do you think the focus area should be on here?
Okay.
And then metrics are easy to figure out after that.
What are metrics?
You know, like...
Measures.
Yeah, measures, two kinds of measures.
Okay.
5% reduction in crime.
Okay, okay, alright. So we, we want to take one category at a time now?
I guess the question I had too is, are these things that we need, that we should be able to influence or directly...
We have a moor.
Control?
We have a moor.
Or do we just want to be very...
Like it could be different jurisdictions or...
Yeah, you know, I, you know.
Well, no, I think what she's, I think what the mayor is saying is that another group, they're going to come up with a better name.
They think so.
The mayor just whispered, "I'm here." I'm not going to tell you what she whispered.
I can tell because I overheard.
No, she said, she said, "I cheated." In other words, another group came up with community connection.
Okay, instead of pride.
Yeah, so another group's going to have that term.
Okay. So how much do you like the word pride?
I like pride. Having pride, it's a good thing, it's uplifting, you're proud, it's a good thing, you've accomplished something. You feel good about yourself, you want to, you know, we have a lot of pride, you and I, Orlando. It's a good thing. I like pride.
I want to go mow your lawn tomorrow. That's how proud I am of my neighborhood. I do it to my neighbors all the time.
Okay, well, let's get back on track. What are we doing now?
I like those numbers.
Instead of having this love... And we don't, we don't have to go one by one, because I don't think we're going to get through all of them. So which one matters the most to you and what would you like to see accomplished in the next two to three years, three to five years?
Of these categories, in other words, pick a category and focus on it.
Most definitely, one would have to be fiscally responsible government. That is the controller at this point.
I agree. In the last two or three years, we've spent more time on our budget and the related issues, the collective bargaining, uh, and everything, that it's, it's a top priority.
Next would have to be proactive business community. That's where the collaborative and the government's coming to.
Except that most of the, um, focus groups and everything, people, one of their priorities is safe city. They want to feel safe. But then again, they didn't put that as a high priority for funding? Is that how that works?
Well, because 70% of our budget goes to public safety, so that wasn't an issue for them, because the response times are well within the margin of error.
We're making great progress.
The number one issue in the person survey was, was in terms of funding and, but it also ranked the lowest in terms of results in economic development.
Right, proactive business community.
So what are you, first of all, I missed, anything that happened after this, I missed.
What you suggested though was for us to pick one and focus on it, and we kind of bounced around. So let's stick with, my recommendation would be, let's stick with what Councilman Barlow said, and let's talk about fiscally responsible government and what that means.
I thought I heard something along the lines of...
No, no, I think, well, we have to have a balanced budget, so...
No, what I mentioned was that due to the economic time that we're in, that our budget controls the direction in which we're going in these next couple of fiscal cycles. So that's what...
About providing core services.
Providing core services?
So providing what services?
Core services. We have to do that. Police, fire, um, water, providing core services. That's part of being a fiscally responsible government. We run out of money, we can't fund Metro. We run out of money, we have to cut from our fire. So part of being fiscally responsible...
Well, we run out of money, we also have to cut from our rec centers as well, programs and services that are provided to the community.
I would agree that those are part of the core services we do. So it all comes under the same category.
If we were successful in fiscally responsible government in five years, what would... If we were successful in fiscally responsible government in five years, what would be happening? We'd be doing more than just providing core services, right? What would you like to see?
I agree with that.
Would you be restoring your service levels? Or would it be a point of expanding?
Not necessarily, because we have to learn from where we are today. Because if we don't, we're going to basically, you know, the council will basically repeat what we've gone through. So we have to be in a better position to identify if in fact we want to restore those services or basically establish services that will possibly sustain for future councils.
What about stable workforce?
I like that. That's where the new employee comes into play.
Is it stable or is it sustainable?
That's exactly what Orlando just asked me.
Is it stable or sustainable?
I can see sustainable coming in this category, but not being one of our buzzword titles.
Got it.
Because we didn't like sustainable, because most people don't even know what that means.
Well, it has a lot of.
No, but I like it here, when we're talking about defining what fiscally responsible.
Because stable might imply, we had three thousand employees last year, and we have three thousand employees next year. Sustainable means you can actually afford all three thousand of them, year after year after year.
Not necessarily. Stable.
We're in good shape.
To me, means that wherever our budget is.
We're right.
We're, we're right in alignment with that.
That's true, too.
So if we're this big, then we adjust. And if we're this small, we adjust. That's stability to me.
Okay.
But I agree, though. Somebody mentioned something about outside of core services. I mean, are, are parks considered a core service? That's debatable, right?
It's a major asset.
Okay.
I would consider it, I mean, it's a major investment. For ten years, we invested more in parks than we did in.
But is it, so it is a core service?
I would say it's.
By default, by default, we have created it. A basic service, yes. Because our constituents depend on our parks.
The reason why I ask the question is, right now, we don't clean the parks very good.
That's true.
You know, so that's part of the service restoration in my mind. You know, do we want to get to a place where we can restore service levels, where we're not getting complaints on the weekends, that the trash bins are full and the power washer hadn't been out there to power wash the barbecue places?
I would, I would argue that the definition of what core is, is critical in defining fiscal responsibility. Because if, remember, when we were going through the fundamental service review process, we labored over what things would be retained, what things would be cut, what a core service was, what was something we could afford to cut. So defining what, down the road, defining what are core services is gonna be critical.
And also, Nancy, going back to your point, because I, I believe I know where you're going with this as far as restoring the service levels, I believe it still falls under core services.
I agree. And maybe that's right, it's a definition of what that means.
Right.
Because in my mind, we cut a core service back almost to the bone, and we're not serving the public with the asset optimally yet. So there's an optimization in my mind, as your city manager, that we haven't quite struck yet. We've been trying to get back to some of those things, but we haven't like gone back and created brand-new programs or expanded programs, but we're not back to the basic level of service yet either, in some areas.
Right. But to me, as long as the program or service has not been eliminated, it's a part of that core.
Got it.
So it's going back to wherever our budget allows us to be.
So maybe it's core service levels.
True.
Maybe it's core service levels, because.
Because if we eliminate it, then we're basically bringing something back that we chose to get rid of.
Right. Ten minutes, we have ten minutes.
Um, I'm gonna pause.
So how do you change this? Providing core service levels? Restoring core service?
I think, I think it's a matter of, some matters.
Yeah, we just have to define that. I was wondering, are we saying, because it seems like it works.
About ten minutes.
Stable and sustainable workforce. Because stable means they stay over time, and then sustainable means we can afford it.
So you like, like both words?
I'm wondering if they both work, stable and sustainable.
Okay, put an and in there, yeah. Now, as a government, are we not required to provide certain services in case of an emergency? If we, God forbid, a terrorist attack or something like that. So being fiscally responsible, should we also be prepared, in the case of an emergency, to be able to fund something?
Yeah, in fact, that's one of the reasons why we have a rainy day fund.
Okay, so, I don't know if we have to spell it out like that, but.
We're always worried about that rainy day fund, aren't we? That the state will rate it.
Well, when I first joined the council, because I, I use the term rainy day fund, I said, don't say that, don't say that, because they'll come and take your money.
Stabilization.
Yeah, and it's protected.
It's protected, yeah.
It's protected.
Okay, so.
For audit purposes, don't remember, it's gonna roll into the general fund.
What about responsive? Responsive in a time of need? I don't know.
Responsive in a time of need?
That sounds good, but I don't know what that means. I mean, I know what it means, because we just spent two minutes on it, but to somebody who reads it for the first time, what does that mean?
Emergency. Emergency.
That's.
Emergency responsive?
That's an interesting notion, because I, I don't mean to throw any darts, but we certainly would be able to handle crises.
But that's because of being fiscal.
Much better than a neighborhood in the north.
That's my point. It's because we're fiscally responsible.
So how do you word that?
Emergency responsive.
That's a good point.
Or emergency.
How about just leave it like that? Responsive in a time of need slash emergency.
Is that okay?
Because it's coming under fiscally responsible, so we know we're talking about fiscal responsibility.
Right, right.
Remember, this is not gonna be in the title, these are descriptive terms, so I think it serves its purpose.
I would love to see something appear about rewarding employees with performance.
Well, that, well, but that's why I was gonna go there, with stable and sustainable workforce.
Okay.
If we're, if we don't reward our employees, I was gonna make this statement, if we, if we were in flat mode in perpetuity, at some point, we'd start losing our employees to other places.
So it implies that in stable and.
Right, that's why I said that.
This was just something I heard you say, Councilman, when you were talking about providing the core service level, you talked about, are we making sure the budget is aligned to those core service levels? So do we want, besides balance, do we want it aligned, balanced and aligned?
That's saying the same thing. Balance and alignment.
Well, balance to me means revenues equal expenses, but I'm an accountant, so.
Align to me means that whatever the priorities are.
Doing the right stuff.
Focus study, right, yeah. Well, that's kind of what I.
That's how I think of it as well.
Because balance just means revenues.
But I like, I don't, I agree that there's a need for that, but I don't know that most people would take aligned to mean that.
Okay.
Is there another way of, I like it.
No, I was just throwing.
Is there another way of saying it?
I'm wondering if, on the core services, you could say, you could modify by saying, providing core services that meet citizen priorities.
Providing core services to meet.
To meet.
To meet the priorities, the priorities of our citizens.
Which would cover everything from public safety to.
Well, and it can be adjusted as time goes on, because our, to meet the needs of our constituents. I like that.
That helps you define what the core services.
No, I like that.
Important question. Who is reporting out on this, City Group?
You are. You're the scribe.
I'm the scribe. That's true.
You've got a lot of institutional knowledge, because you've been doing this for a few months, so unless there's a reason for elected, Ripley, you want to do it?
You were just speaking of.
I mean, you want to do it, go ahead, I don't want to do it.
I know, I know.
I think Maggie could do a great job articulating the.
We're gonna do another one?
The consensus.
Yeah.
So what do we do, proactive business?
Okay.
So you didn't step back.
Just not sure I'm gonna elaborate on this.
Will help.
We'll support you. This is gonna be.
Those are our two.
Because this was our two main.
Priorities, right.
So how do we know we're doing a good job, right?
It's too narrow.
Five years from now.
I want to see like.
We're at with success.
I don't know how many square blocks downtown covered with businesses. I want to see more businesses downtown. I think that you know that you're being successful if that's happening.
With employment to the number of.
And just jobs.
Now, this is where the word thriving could come in.